All right, everybody.
We are.
We are. Please rise to the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and everlasting God presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those who make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Yes, sir. All right, let's start with the roll call.
Mr. Belishko.
Yeah.
Ms. McLeigh.
President.
Mr. Mearon.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Also in attendance is Mayor George Brown, Controller Tony Thomas, Administrator Charles McCormick, and City Attorney Tim Henner. Good evening, welcome to tonight's regular session of City Council. Please turn off all cell phones. Following our examples of some important council rules, they are not intended to be a complete list. Please adhere as closely as possible to the five-minute speaker presentation time limit. No persons are allowed to address the council from beyond the rail except the speaker at the dais who has the floor. The chairperson shall preserve order and decorum and prevent attacks on personalities. The chairperson shall determine all points of order. No person except city officers or their representatives shall be permitted within the rail during any meeting without the express permission of council. Council kindly asks that the public please vacate the building within 10 minutes after the meeting adjourns. And finally, when members of the administration are speaking, please stand up and speak into the microphone.
Thank you. We have several resolutions and one ordinance on our agenda for this evening. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this pending legislation? I know Mr. Troy wishes to, I believe, correct?
Yeah. Do you have a comment?
All right, sir.
Am I up?
You're up.
First of all, you don't need my name, I guess.
Yeah, sure.
Sam Troy. The installation of the nonlit double sided -- I had, by the way, a chance to view some of the work session on YouTube, so I'm a little bit ahead of the game tonight, thank God. But anyway, the installation of the nonlit double-sided blade sign, isn't that a matter for zoning rather than council? I don't get that. I mean, normally, any additions of signs would come under the aegis of zoning, you know, that Bill Harris is a -- maybe I'm wrong there, there's some exception. But the more important, the more critical element here, the $2.5 million grant for the epidemiology and laboratory capacity. So I would question, I didn't, unfortunately, the volume on YouTube was poor and I couldn't un -- I don't know if the questions might have been, or these points might have been discussed. But I assume this is going to the, and first of all, this is the whole, this agenda is all the mayor's agenda, right? It's not council's. So, Mayor, maybe you can tell us, unless someone in council can tell us, that this money would be then given to the Department of, our Department of Health, correct? I mean, the Wilkes-Barre Department of Health. So, in addition to the revenue that they already have, and I thought there was already an ex -- maybe you could straighten this out, I don't know, or somebody could straighten me out. I thought they were already set up to do this testing. This is, I assume, it doesn't say here again in this, but is this for testing of infectious diseases? I thought they already had that capacity. I understand that $2 million, $2.5 million would be coming from the State Department of Health, but still, it's taxpayer money no matter what way you look at it. I think we have a right to know if this is just going to be amount to, going to be tantamount to, you know, expanding the purview of the city health department. I would like to know what the necessity for that is. Because as far, as far as I know, they were, well, maybe I'm wrong, because I remember calling during the pandemic for, to inquire as to whether or not I could get treatment there. I never had, luckily, thankfully, never came down with the COVID, but I wanted to see if I could get a shot there, and they told me no. Now, this goes back, of course, during the height of the COVID. So I assume that this grant, which is a lot of money, Mayor, will be set up for things like that? I mean, will they be set up, if I gets, somebody gets sick, my relative gets sick, and she doesn't want to go to the hospital, or hey, can she go over to the health department, get attention with this, because of this grant? I mean, these are questions I think have to be answered. As far as the ADA project goes, I guess that's certainly a good thing. But I was, I was just curious to know whether the city initiates that, or are there some, there are some standards, criteria that have to be met, the city is meeting by spending this extra money and doing this construction here? In other words, does this, is this a mandate? You know, does this come down from the Department of Community Economic? Well, that's how it's funded. Is this just, this is to attract tourist grant funding, or is this to meet standards and criteria set down by the, by this ADA, by the Disabilities Act? And the last one, I do have what I think is a critical question. You know, there's been a lot of, I mentioned, at least on my part, questions about the WVSA, Rolling Valley Sanitary Authority and their role. Mike is not here tonight, or is he listening in?
He's listening.
I don't know if you can answer, Mike, since you're on the board down there. But doesn't the construction, now, I heard on YouTube the other night that what the problem is here, the chief, Delaney, was talking about the fact that, you know, this is, this is part of the project, I guess, this pumping station. But isn't the WVSA supposed to do that, rather than the city having to contract this thing out? This is my understanding. I mean, every time the city has a problem with something like this, I would think, with a pumping station, that, are they, I mean, you have to have, you know, hire the right contractor, and of course, I assume that the WVSA is pretty capable in installing these pumping stations, and, you know, and I see that's necessary, because the chief said that there's, there was a raw sewage problem there, which was pretty substantial a year or two ago. This is going to correct that, and, and I'm, and look, I'm not against this project, per se. You know, flood control is good, and I understand there were a couple of questions the other night as to whether or not this might bring insurance rates down, and if it does, that's certainly a good thing for the, for the people in this area, for the Brookside area that's down below Hollenbeck, right? These are good things. But again, you know, a million bucks here is being, how is that funded, by the way? You know, it kind of doesn't say here. That, I assume that's not ARP money, right? But maybe you can answer that question as well, a million bucks. I assume these people were bona fide low bidders, Hadley and Apollo. I'm a little leery of Apollo, to be honest with you, because I don't think they've done too much of a bang-up job with the school district. There's some problems there, I don't know if it was Apollo's fault, but you know, there's some problems there with cracking in the tarozzo flooring already, Billy's only three years old. Or was that, was that Stell the cause of that? I don't know. But anyway, if you could just at least fill me in as to whether the, this WVSA would be more capable of doing the construction on this pumping station. Thank you. I don't know if anybody has any answers.
Attorney Henry, maybe you could tell us why we need to do an ordinance for signs over sidewalks?
My understanding's always been if it's going to hang over the sidewalk, it comes to city council.
Because there is an ordinance prohibiting those things to begin with, so we would have to make an exception for that in this.
So that's not a zoning?
I believe they go to zoning first.
Yeah, I think it's a zoning issue, too.
Zoning issue, too?
But it becomes a council issue if the sign's going to overhang the sidewalk.
Are you there to address any of those concerns?
Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Belishko.
Sam, Mike Belishko. I believe what that's about, I believe what that's about is more of a high-water event in the creek that's causing a sewer backup. When you talk about sewer, you think of the sanitary authority, but it's the high-water events that's happening there, and the pumping station's being put in so that doesn't happen, so the sewers don't back up. If I'm correct, that's what that's there for.
Right. So this is not a WVSA issue, is it? I can't.
No, it wasn't a WVSA issue. It's caused by high water, and the city's responsible for that, if you will.
Okay.
The pumping station.
Power to that pumping station in the event of a power issue during high, in high-water events. Okay. All right, anyone else counsel? Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else on pending legislation?
So we're going to need a motion and a second on a consent agenda, which includes the four resolutions and minutes.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mearon. Mr. Belishko.
Yeah.
Ms. McLeigh.
Yes.
Mr. Mearon.
Yes.
Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
And we need a motion and a second on the second reading ordinance, which is filed at Council Number Three of 2024, and that is regarding adopting the 2024 Action Plan. We need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second. By Ms. McLeigh. Second by Mr. Brooks. Mr. Belishko.
Yeah.
Ms. McLeigh. Yes.
Mr. Mearon.
Yes.
Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. You okay? All right. Mr. Belishko, anything for us this evening?
I just want to thank Charlie and the mayor. I had a couple events or issues at Solms Creek, and the mayor and Charlie got together and came up with a plan, and it's going to be in force soon once DEP gets approval, and I'm so happy about it. It's something that's been needed for a while. So thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, counsel.
Anything else, sir?
No, I'm good, thank you, pal.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McLeigh?
A few things. So, at my crime watch meeting, they wanted to know if we can add the dates of their meetings onto the city calendar? Is that something we can maybe look at? So this way residents are aware of, like, the North Wilkes-Barre crime watch meeting or the Rolling Mill Hill crime watch meeting. Is that something we could even maybe discuss to you?
I would have, it was already on there.
No, they're not on there.
They're private.
I think it should be, I think you're right.
The problem is, you know, how do we differentiate them?
Okay.
They're really a private neighborhood type of situation.
Right.
So I think that the purpose, the purpose of the calendar, although it's to keep information, is basically municipal information driven by municipality concerns. So the problem is where do you draw the line?
Yeah.
Then you're going to get all sorts of other people requesting that we're interested in.
Okay.
That's my initial, I'll recheck if, that would be my initial, it's fine.
Okay. My next thing is, and this came up because I'm out, my husband, he got a ticket in the mail today for speeding in a zone that was a 35, and he was doing 42. Have we ever looked at maybe using those speed cameras as a way of enforcement? It was, it's a $40 ticket, simple, I paid it so that we don't have to worry about, but is that something we can maybe look at on our busier streets?
No, the state restricts it, they don't allow municipalities to use guns or cameras. We just had a whole discussion of it.
Look at you, you got all my answers today.
Well, we got good answers for you, but the ones you want, but they're answers.
Okay, and then I want to welcome LCTA to Wilkes-Barre. It is a beautiful building, if anybody gets a chance, tour it, brings lots of employment. But that also takes me on to my next thing. All these empty lots. So I understand the hotel, we got the answer that they have until August. Have we received any updates? Have they, like, reached out? Are they still, everything's going forward, everything looks like it's going forward? Have they gotten any permits for the Luzern Bank? Because I know in that meeting, they did say that as of July 1st, I believe, all the residents were going to be out, and he said he was going to be in there the next day working. So have they gotten any permits or anything on that? That's all I got? No permits, nothing? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mearon?
Yeah, I just want to follow up with Charlie here, I want to thank him. There was a concrete street sign that was falling down on Purdon Lane, and it was replaced the next day, and it was a safety hazard there by the restored church. I want to thank him and especially DPW for all their hard work. Thank you. That's all I have for today.
Mr. Brooks? The other day, when we were at the ribbon cutting for Evergreen on North Hampton Street, I noticed some of the trees were gone. Just want to make sure that's on our radar to replace those trees on North Hampton where Evergreen is, where the Chamber of Commerce is going in. There's two trees are gone there. Just make sure, I just want to make sure it's on your agenda, that's all.
They were damaged by storm.
Yeah.
So, not to say we can't.
Okay, good, that's all. And remind everyone that Rock in the River is this tomorrow night. I think it said there was only a 30% chance of rain, so I understand it's still going on, and we have three concerts coming up, so I hope to see everyone there in the river common. Thanks.
Free booze, right?
Not free, you have to pay for it, Sam.
Nothing since Tuesday, okay, thank you, sir. I was happy to see people out painting lines on the streets today. I noticed North Washington Street up in Miners Mills, so thank you for getting that moving. I know that we approved that a little while ago, and I saw the line painters out there actually doing a nice job measuring and putting lines down where there were none on North Washington Street and Miners Mills, and hopefully getting some of these other lines that are faded redone during the summer as well. So it's a much-needed safety project, and we certainly appreciate that. The other thing I'd brought up, I'd brought up once before about Stevens Road, and maybe some of you don't know where it is. There's a small stretch between New Hancock and New Grant that's actually not paved. It's not anything. And I don't know if it's what it would take to put down just some sort of a little more permanent surface. I'm not saying, I'm not advocating a full repaving, but people do use it to go between those two streets. It's at the end of both streets, it runs parallel to the back of Cole Street Park. If we could take a look at it and see if there's something we can do, just make, make the surface a little bit more pervious there, it would be a great thing. I appreciate anything you do there, but that's all I have since Tuesday as well. Thank you, Mayor. Linda Joseph. Good evening.
Linda Joseph, Wilkes-Barre. First, I'd like to say, great job to Chief Delaney and the Fire Department for checking on the residents over at Provincial Towers for their situation, I guess, when they didn't have air conditioning, once they became aware that there was a problem, even though that is a privately-owned development, I guess. But kudos to them for checking on them, because that's a serious situation with the heat wave that we had. Secondly, the safety sticks that were placed around downtown a year ago, actually, it was a year ago last week, I believe. So, any update on how is that playing out? Is it working? Are we fining or, you know, issuing tickets to people? I know of a situation where someone got a ticket and they had no idea what that was or why they got it, but it was waived because they had only been there, like, I guess, a little bit more than the 90 seconds, but they were just running over there and whatever, so it was waived. But are we going to put more around? What's, you know, how is that working? Do people really know what they are? Is there enough, maybe we need a reminder out there or something? But that was a situation that came up recently.
You have anything else?
One more, one more. The Hazel Street wall over at Bank Street. It real, it's, it's, it's just deteriorating more and more every day. It's falling down, the bricks are coming down. But the other thing is, what happened to all the grass on that entire wall? It is now all brown. It's like someone poured weed killer. There is no green. It's awful, it's ugly. Did, did that happen on its own? Did we, I know it's on the hill, so it might be hard to, to cut and stuff, but, oh, for the free entrance into the city off of Hazel Street, it's bad. It really is. And maybe we can do something with whatever's coming down off that wall temporarily, I know the money's allocated, but it's, it's, it's a, something's going to happen there, it's just not a good situation. And that's all I have.
Linda, I'm glad you asked that question about the wall. I mentioned this to John Sokowski on the way in, because John's parents live there, and he was asking me, whenever something's going to happen, would I let him know? So yes, we actually have it out for bid, the wall. I was there with Mark Barry, our grant coordinator, Georgia Alver, who's the engineer in charge. We've identified the areas that should be done right away, there are several. We have the money for that.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to utilize the grant that we secured, we're going to start, once we get the RFPs back, lowest responsible bidder, you're going to start to see some work on that in a matter of, I can't give you a definitive, but very soon.
Good.
Okay, so that's going to be, we're going to address that. That's a major, major issue we have on our to-do list.
Perfect.
The smart sticks, yeah, we did educate, we did put something out when they first came out. We originally put them in places that people definitely should not park at. I mean by that is fire hydrants, handicap spots, okay, that are identified, too close to the corner, those type things that are safety hazards, or could be a safety hazard, meaning it's too close. They've been very successful.
Okay.
We have expanded. You'll see more now on Old River Road.
Oh, okay.
And you're going to say, why there? Because when the kids get out from Kissler, it could be a hazardous situation. People are actually parking up on the grassy areas. So now there's those safe sticks.
Okay.
We put them and identified them in the areas that we feel, first of all, are going to be more safer by doing that. The tickets are generated by the company, we don't have to get involved. It's very successful, and that's why we're going to be adding more, Linda.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's more coming throughout the city.
Do you think we could maybe put something back out in the papers, just a reminder for people? Because I think it would help at least they don't understand why they're getting the tickets in the mail and they shouldn't be there.
Happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Emily Casper?
Good evening, Pamela Casper, Wilkes-Barre. We have been fighting to get a handicap sign in front of our home. My husband is totally blind. Bill Harris said, will you have a driveway you could park in? My son took pictures, and up the hill from us are people with driveways with handicap signs. What we feel like we're being discriminated against. He can't, I cannot park in the driveway and get out. It's very narrow, we're between two homes. We park close to the one home, I could just about get out my door. I cannot leave him out on the street. He's totally blind, his balance isn't good, and I live on a hill. Yeah, Harris said, will you have a driveway? That doesn't solve the problem. And how many times we come home from the doctor? We couldn't even get in, park in front of my house. Mr. Softy's selling ice cream, I don't care, but we had to sit there and wait for him to leave. And there's some homes have three, four, and five cars, so they take out all the rest. I can't park up on a hill and bring him down.
Did you say what street you're on?
Andover. You want to see the pictures? Yes, he took pictures.
Sure.
Because, Mr. Mayor, my sister said she had talked to you quite a while ago, and you said, no, it's not your job, you have to speak to, we have to speak to Bill Harris, and that's what he told us. Will you have a driveway?
Yeah, I remember, and I saw pictures, either you or your sister sent me, I'm not really.
No, my sister.
Okay, I thought it was resolved, I'll be honest with you. I thought it was taken care of, but.
But up the hill from us, two homes have driveways on both sides and signs.
Okay.
Like my son said, he said, we don't want a sign because everybody else has one.
I thought it was resolved, I'll be very honest with you, okay? But we'll look into that for you.
Okay.
And please let your sister know that we'll get back.
Okay.
Okay? I know what you're talking about, I saw the pictures, I saw how narrow your driveway is.
It's a small driveway, very small, I'm very familiar with the area.
But I'll look into it again and we'll get back to you, okay?
We're going to.
Thank you very much.
We're going to get a phone number off of you.
Sure, oh, sure. Okay, just on the top. Can we leave?
Yes.
Thank you, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is narrow. I'm not sure what the [inaudible]. So narrow, what? Just the rest of the back.
Oh, yeah, they're.
John Sokowski?
That's not even, that's not even a question, man.
John Sokowski, Almond Lane. First, you know, thank you for addressing the wall, like, it really needs it, you know, I don't want to see. Sorry, I shut the mic off, I didn't know I was touching. I'll stop touching things, you know, but, you know, it really, it really needs, and it's, you know, needed some to be addressed for a while. My questions are going to.
John, hold on one second.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
I'm not going to use all the time, don't matter.
Stan, that one, too.
Oh. You can give them back, you know.
Yeah. All right. How do you think? It's cold. Oh, fuck, I.
Andover, is that Tony's area? Is that your area, Andover?
Yeah, that is a, it's really tight, that block.
Mm-hmm.
And really, even driveways, if you think about it, you know, that's a small car, too.
Thanks, John.
They're made for cars.
Yeah, you're right.
Luzern County Bank Building, so I've seen, like, I'm assuming, like, we've sold that at least three times, I seen Ms. McLeigh brought it up. So my questions are, like, how much, like, how much money is attached to this building, like, in grants? Because I know, like, the one time, I believe, it was, I think George Alver, when he, when he had a purchasing agreement for it, that I think we, we had grants attached to it at that time, and I know that we've spent a lot of money in the past to stabilize the roof. So I'd like to know, just how much, like, how much money is there? Like, if you bought that property, is there grant money that comes along with it when you buy it? And if, like, okay, like, you know, we had so many, two deals already fall through, like, is this deal with the gentleman who has it, who would like to purchase it now, like, is that a done deal, or is there a chance that that falls through? Because, you know, we've, we've had a history of this property falling through, and like, people come in with, about this property and give us all these promises and, you know, show us all these nice pictures, but in the end, you know, it ends up back in our possession, and, you know, we still have to maintain it, and I, from my understanding, that there's, you know, there's, there's serious issues with the building, but it's not, you know, it's well worth saving. So that's all I have. I just see a general discussion about that property. Thank you.
Yeah, John, you're right, we've had several, I don't know how many were interested before I became mayor, but I know since I've been mayor, we've had several. I have people come to me, they say, this is our project plan, this is what we want to do. You know, I can't talk about the finance, because that's what they work on, okay? They promise we have financing and other things. The building is for sale for $450,000. With that goes a grant of $250,000 to be used on anything on that building to update it. It could be used for HVAC, electrical, whatever, whatever the purchaser deems it should be used for. But it's going to cost a lot more than that to get that building back. I mean, we're probably talking a couple million. But as long as I have people that say they're interested and someone else backs out, I'm going to keep coming before council saying, look, and I have someone else interested. Right now, I have two or three people that have reached out to my office saying, if the deal with Mr. Bloxton falls through, please let me know, because I'm interested.
Good.
But once we say that, and I come to council and I say, look, here's the people that want to buy it, here's what they're going to do with it, we'll show pictures, we'll everything else, I can't help it after that point. But as long as I have people that say they're interested and someone else backs out, I'm going to keep coming before council saying, look, I have someone else interested. Right now, I have two or three people that have reached out to my office saying, if the deal with Mr. Bloxton falls through, please let me know because I'm interested.
Good.
But once we say that and I come to council and I say, look, it, here's the people that want to buy it, here's what they're going to do with it, we'll show pictures, we'll everything else, I can't help it after that point. Now it's in their hands to get the proper financing, okay? And I'm going to continue to do that. So, yeah, I brought three people here. It might be another person, but I'm going to keep doing it. That's my job, to try to sell that building, get it back on the tax rolls, okay? And then that money that we receive for that can be used back into city needs, okay, for whatever we need it for. So I understand your frustration. How do you think I feel? I've come before these people three times saying, I got a buyer. But seriously, I'm going to keep doing that. And then we are going to have a buyer, but I do have people, I guess, that are interested. But right now, we're locked into an agreement with the Bloxton folks. Once that's no longer an agreement, whatever, we can look at other options that we have. But we're going to sell it. We're going to sell it, remind me.
Um, Blake, just one other thing, I'm sorry. Uh, like, is there anything, like, we could do, like, in the next purchasing agreement to ma, you know, like, you know, just to protect ourselves more so we don't, you know, I, my thing is, like, that's, that's a marquee property for us. So like, the, our most important thing should be, you know, getting someone in there who's serious and is going to open something as quickly as possible because that could bring more people to our downtown. So like, like, I know the timeframe things are hard, especially, you know, like, I, I don't, you know, I've had a problem with the Sterling, you know, how long that's taken, like, but could we, any, you know, you know, put some kind of timeframe on there just to hopefully push whoever buys it again or, you know, to develop?
Yeah, I mean, we'll do our best. I'm working with, you know, the city solicitor and my team will do our best to do that. Believe me, I, I wanted that thing sold two years ago. I really did. And we did do work in there. They did work before I was mayor. We've done work after that. Like, there were some small issues, but they've all been, you know, taken care of. That building's ready to go. And we're going to sell that, I promise you. And when we're done with it, it's going to be a beautiful structure that's going to be a place you're going to be proud of.
It's marble a lot, so, you know, it's, you don't get that everywhere.
Comments from council on that? Thank you. Okay. Okay. Thank you, John. Brian Perry.
I got it.
Got it?
Your name for the record, sir, please?
Yeah, so my name is Brian Perry. Uh, 147 South Washington Street. I know we've talked about this a little bit in the past, but I know there's some fresh faces here and some things have changed, so I feel it is imperative to bring this up again. A couple of years ago, I was pounding the table for looking at transit oriented development. And recently, there was an RFP put out by Luzern County Transit Authority regarding Bus Rapid Transit for connecting Scranton, Wilkes-Barre, and Hazleton. This, this is what we need to be doing. We need to be looking at transit oriented development. Otherwise, it's not going to happen. We need to be proactive. We need to get stuff done, you know? And just, just sitting, sitting here twiddling our thumbs, hoping things are going to change. That's not how things happen. So, you know, but we need to be proactive. We, we need to, we, we just need to, to, you know, get things done in this regard. So they, in the RFP, LCTA calls out that service, train service from Scranton to New York City will be beginning in 2028. So that seems ambitious. But the way that we can capitalize on that is through this LCTA Bus Rapid Transit study. We need to, and, and I said this, you know, a couple of years ago when I was here, you know, PennDOT and I, I hate to say I told you so, but I'm going to say I told you so. You know, else, or PennDOT was going to do the feasibility study for extending the train down to Wilkes-Barre. And that's when I came and said, we, we got to be proactive and show good faith that, you know, we, we are invested and nothing, you know, no, no action had been taken. And then PennDOT pulled the study, you know? And I, I called it from day one. I said, if we're not proactive, they're not going to pursue this. So, you know, now LCTA is taking the reins on this, but we, you know, the, the city still has to be proactive and, you know, understanding what the city's role in is in this Bus Rapid Transit system. So, you know, just, you know, I, I kind of go into detail on what BRT is through here, I believe. Um, I, I also had an issue with my printer, so, sorry. Sorry that things are a little wonky there. But, I mean, you know, they, they always say that Bus Rapid Transit is, you know, any kind of transit is good to, you know, have be fronted with an open space. So, you know, taking that currently empty lot by, you know, across from Turkey Hill on North Street, you know, and just, just close your eyes and imagine it. You're, you're, you're getting off this Bus Rapid Transit system and you're walking down a grand staircase and you're immediately welcomed with this, you know, this beautiful, classic, timelessly designed square, similar to Rittenhouse Square in Philly. Beautiful. One of the, one of the greatest public spaces in this country. We could have something similar to that right here. And, and you're greeted with that. And, you know, and, and it's not just that. We, we need to redesign Penn Ave as a whole. So you're, you're greeted with this beautiful square. And you turn left and you're just guided down this beautiful tree-lined boulevard. You know, we, we can have that. And, and businesses would thrive. Well, again, look at, you know, look at Rittenhouse Square. What, what's one of the most developed areas in Philly? It's fronting Rittenhouse Square. What, what are the most developed places in New York City? Look at Central Park. Everyone, everyone wants a piece of that. We, we could have, even here in Wilkes-Barre, what's the most densely developed area in the city? Public Square. We can have, we can do better and we need to do better. And this, this Bus Rapid Transit study is our opportunity. You know, opportunity is knocking. We, we have to, we have to acknowledge that. We have to be responsible and say, okay, you know, this is where the future, you know, people want to live in densely, densely populated towns. People want to have transit. People don't want to be burdened by thousands and thousands of dollars worth of automobile costs. So my time's up, but that's, that's all I got. I, I can keep going if you want, but I'm sure these fine folks want to go home at some point.
So, you know, this is all music to my ears. I completely love it. I would love to see Pennsylvania Boulevard, one big, grand, grass and tree Boulevard. My question is, who owns Pennsylvania Boulevard? Do we own it or does, or Penn, or PennDOT?
We own it.
Ah, okay.
Yes. So we own it up until, I want to say, it, it's very weird. I want to say it's PennDOT owned after the South Street Bridge, which consequently doesn't even actually cross it. It crosses over it.
Under it, right?
Yes.
It goes under it. And that land that you're talking about at the corner of North and Pennsylvania, that's privately owned.
Correct.
We don't know that. I think the guy's dead, he actually owns it right now, so it's probably in his, in his.
I know it's been for sale for quite some time.
Yeah. I think it's tied up in a state now. But no argument from me. I would love to see it. Love to see it.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you so much.
Sam Troy.
Just wondering, Mayor, why you evaded that point I made about the Health Department in the agenda part of the session. I, you know me, I'm, I endorse frugality. I, I like frugality and being careful with the way money's spent. I like to see a lot of bank for my buck as a taxpayer. And to be honest with you, I don't see that for, on the whole here in the city. It's unfortunate because it, it results not only in, in people overpaying taxes, you know, for wasteful things, as I see it, but lessening, undermining the quality of life in general. There's a lot on my mind that can't be covered in the time allowed here. First of all, I'm disappointed that we haven't had a formal, I don't know what needs to happen here for Mr. Thomas to come up and give a, even an outline, a rough outline of the fiscal pulse of the city, to give a controller's report, so to speak. I, I mean, I think that is, you know, a, a, a very important, a very good thing that every, probably every other municipality observes in some, to some extent. But for some reason, this, you know, he's been in office now, what, almost a year? Well, maybe six months. Okay, but so far, it hasn't happened and, and I'm disappointed it hasn't. Back to the, the Health Department and the sense of frugality. It, it, look, Mayor, I could be wrong, but it, it seems that maybe you have ulterior motives here with this large grant coming to the Health. Now, I understand the Health Department does one good thing. The people that are in the offices here, they, they also do what I guess code enforcement would do when they go around to homes that are, have a lot of trash, weeds, et cetera, that, and, and they try, and they hand out warnings and fines and that sort of thing, which I don't think you need a Health Department for. And as I understand it, we have, we're one of the few cities in the whole state that have a Health Department. And there's a large amount of money. Okay, the city doesn't directly put money in there except for benefits. That's a lot of money there, though. The state does fund the salaries, I guess, as I understand it. Could you maybe give an, an overall justification of why we need a Health Department? What, what are their, what are their functions? I mean, how does this, how does the average citizen benefit from it? I still, I'm still in the dark about it. Maybe, maybe somebody in council can answer me. Can you answer me, Mr. Mayor? You know what? Ever had to use the Health Department for anything besides code enforcement? Now I'm telling you, you know, that's, that's a separate issue. But we have, what is it, eight nurses or more up in the Kirby Health Center? Something like that? What, what exactly do they do? I, I think I have a right to know. And I think I have a right to know why we need another, what is it, a couple million dollars? This looks like a subtle, insidious way to expand the Health Department, to maybe find more, you know, to, to, to find, to have more employees or to, to increase salaries. I also want to touch on the very little time I have remaining. If the mayor, Charlie, could, could just inform us as to what the, and I know Mr. Henry could chip in here a little bit. Does the city have any option, legal option, Mr. Henry, in light of the fact that the project, that the Sterling project, as far as I'm concerned, is dead in the water? That, excuse the expression, really looks like hell, doesn't it, Mayor? With that corner there and all that equipment and mud and stones and debris? Now, the city did do away with the reversionary clause that was, I think, critical for the development of that project, but now the option does not exist, correct? To buy that property back, to, to have it revert back to the property? Is it possible to look into buying that property back from the present owner in some fashion and, and perhaps building something that all, God forbid, all the people in the city could benefit from? Maybe a arts and cultural center or a rec center like they have in Kingston? How about the North Hampton and Main situation? That's another issue. I, I don't think Mr. McCormick could even answer that honestly. What's the situation there? That, I understand there's a phantom company of some kind in Florida that owns that now, and that's pretty much dead in the water. Did the city have any legal option there to perhaps purchase, maybe more so than the Sterling, since the reversionary clause is, is dead there, to buy that property back? Mr. Henry, have you ever been informed by council members or the mayor to look into that? Is it just going to sit there forever as a, as a, you know, a dead project? Lastly, the Iron Temple Project, maybe you know more about than anybody. I mean, that has, to some degree, made some advancements. There's some, some renovation there, but that seems to be stuck in the mud. Is that ever going to be finished? We need desperately, you know, I think, pretty much out of time. Getting, getting back to what we need, to fill those spots in the Historical Preservation Committee, Mayor, and the Shade Tree Commission, I think, are critical, especially in light of the fact that we have the hottest summer ever and we're, we're in the throes of climate change. Thank you for your attention.
Anyone in council?
I don't know if that elicits an answer.
Since you mentioned Iron Temple, Sam, I'm sure you notice every day there's people working at Iron Temple.
That what, Tony?
I'm sure you noticed every day there's people working at Iron Temple. I saw this morning when I was walking my dog, eyes are up on the roof at 7:00 AM. So they're.
How far, percentage-wise?
They're proceeding. Call them and ask them. I'll, I'll find out myself, too. And then as far as the Health Department, I'm very glad that we have a Health Department and I'm, I'm glad the mayor has the, his staff reach out and find every single grant we can possibly have. I think it would, it behooves us to find these grants and it would be bad if we did not.
Could you, could you inform me what the?
What I have used the Health Department for is COVID. I think they did a fantastic job in getting the COVID shots out. And I also get my flu shot every year from, from.
It didn't help. What exactly do they do for, for people with COVID?
They gave, they gave COVID shots to everyone in Wicksberry.
They gave shots?
Yeah. How did you get your COVID shot?
I didn't get it. I never got a COVID shot.
Okay. But you could have got it from the Health Department. They set it up at Wilkes University.
I asked for one, actually, but they, they said I'd have to go to my doctor.
We're not, we're not going to go back and forth. Mr. Brooks is speaking.
So, so I think, I think the Health Department does a great job.
But that's the function of the Health Department, to give COVID shots. That's it.
No, there's a bunch of other functions, too.
Like what?
Go on the city's website.
That's what I'm inquiring about. Nobody has any answers. What about it?
Anyone else care to address that?
Wow.
All right, council members, anything else? Mr. Belisco, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, officer, for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you. Couple motions.
Couple motions.
Motions all around.
Yeah. See you, Mike.
Take care, Mike.
No, you're not.
Yes, yes.
He's putting grass.
I assume so.